All right, it's seven o'clock, a call to order. August thirty first, twenty twenty two Perry Township Board of Trustees Special Meeting. Call the roll.
Trust me, Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trust me, Mears?
Yes.
Trust me, Music?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to jockey around the topics a little bit. I think we'll do an executive session at the end.
Okay.
Just in case you have any more audience. So the first topic will be the K nine program. So we have, we are no longer using the services of K nine Kai. The chief had gone out and procured a young canine. We had a conversation. I had informed him that it would be best if the canine handler was not Sergeant Waymire or himself. And Sergeant Douglas had an interest. So he has now taken possession of the dog. He paid what chief paid. That is taking care of that. So there's an interest and what we have to talk about here is, do we want to continue the K nine program here at Perry Township? Or do we not? And if we do, then that leads us down the road of some more topics. So first I'll just ask if there's a interest by the trustees to maintain the K nine program here in Perry Township.
So Officer Douglas wants to take over the K nine. Are you certified?
He's, we're getting there. He's gonna be certified, the dog's gonna be certified. That's all part of the additional conversation. Though the first thing is, is do we want to have a K nine still in service here? Okay.
Okay.
All right?
Yes.
All right, so we've been reviewing the MOU, which you'll see a copy here. This is not the signed copy. But the only difference here was, I believe the initial one didn't have number six.
And then line six is the only revision that was made.
Right.
I have the original. And when we did the revised, I'm pretty sure that I scanned that into my computer like I did this one.
Right.
But somehow that file is no longer on my computer. But I can tell you for a hundred percent certainty, the only thing that changed in the revision of this contract with line six. Line six in the original contract stated that I was responsible for all the veterinary bills. But I started digging and further discussion with Nathaniel. There is an additional compensation for K nine handling. Now that compensation can come in many forms. Some agencies that have the funds pay their officers an additional pay to what their hourly rate is. Agencies that can't afford that due to funds, they allow the handler to either come in thirty minutes late for their shift or leave thirty minutes early. Now they're still paid for that eight hours still, okay? And that's for the care and the maintenance of the dog. So I talked over with Nathaniel and I was like, look, here's my thought. I'm waiving all of that. But the compensation has to be there. So here's what I'm thinking, you know, up to one vet bill a year compensation. And he agreed. He felt that that was very reasonable. And the reason that was worded up to
At minimum.
One veterinary bill is because, let's say if the dog is out here and he gets shot or stabbed or something in the line of duty. The township then can still take into consideration if they want to cover that bill, if they want to help cover that bill or not cover that bill at all. So it just left some discretionary there with that language.
And the canine was covered by the O T R M A risk insurance.
That would have got to be my next question.
Yeah.
It was. It happened, it would still be.
Under line four there, it says that the township pay for police canine liability yearly through whatever insurance carrier Perry Township is using at the time. So prior to this being reviewed by Nathaniel and signed off by the trustees and myself, we reached out to O T R M A and they said, yes, that that would be covered by our insurance. What I did through my homeowner's insurance and my vehicle insurance, I had an umbrella policy. That umbrella policy was small. So I paid an additional money out of my pocket to broaden that umbrella. So if I'm at home, something away from here and something was to happen, then I'm, I'm covered on that aspect of it. So that's what I chose to do.
So it's my understanding that for the most part Sergeant Douglas is interested in following the letter of what's in this contract. Is that accurate?
I'll let him.
Okay.
But that was a conversation that we have had in my understanding. Yes.
Okay, so right now APA Sharma is looking into a more looking into a contract that embraces best practices to ensure our risk avoidance is in there and that Sergeant Douglas is covered as well. We don't want something that's lopsided with the township. We want to make sure all parties are insulated. So she's working on that. She has some history working with canine contracts and she's pulling some of those together. But I can let her know that for all intents and purposes, if both parties are interested in following the same meat of this MOU, then that can inform what we end up getting as a contract from APA Sharma. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. You look like it.
Well, I just have, I mean, so is he gonna get his car then?
So.
So am I, or I?
You're reading ahead, but it's goodness, it's goodness.
I don't know.
So part of this, part of the understanding and understand that I've had conversations with Chief. I've been writing in pencil.
Yeah.
Nothing is written in stone, but the understanding is, is that Sergeant Douglas would get the K nine cruiser.
Okay.
There's a separate topic regarding Chief's compensation and a vehicle that we'll get to later.
Okay.
Tonight. So yes, he would have the canine vehicle and Sergeant Douglas would also be taking care of the training of the dog.
Right.
The training of himself. If the township had any interest in having a discussion on what certifications would be best, we can have that conversation. If we want to leave it up to Sergeant Douglas, we can do that as well. But we do have that ability to have that conversation. So with that said, what certifications were you looking to try to obtain for this K nine?
So he'll be done as a dual purpose dog. And then he would also be certified in narcotics as well.
And where are you getting this dog? Are you having or what?
I already have the dog.
You already have the dog.
He's eight months old, dog's a little.
Okay.
And we're doing our current turnaround through a place now.
Are you already starting to train?
Not formal, but we're doing some things together just as a getting a chance to him and I to bond to see everything, but we were waiting to have a formal.
Sure.
Before anything is considered more on it. Continuing him to stay busy.
Right, now as far, you know, still a young dog.
Yes.
At what point, it's eight months old, at what point is too long to start training a K nine?
They've already, they've already laid a pretty good foundation, your basic obedience, introduced some odor of narcotics. Been doing tracking. You did a little bit of bite work, if I recall. So that foundation's already being laid. And usually, I'm not a trainer, but from people that I've, you know, spoken with, three, four, five months is when, you know, they really start, you know, hammering things in.
Okay.
And when I got him, the gentleman that I got him from, they, he was already laying some of that work as it was. So it's not like he's coming out and there's no foundation.
Okay, right now we're just kind of maintaining what he knows and just kind of add a little bit here, there and there. But just getting him comfortable with me and my house and, and things of that nature. So that way it was a easier transition.
I guess I just have several questions like with the car and stuff. So would you only work on part time? What happens if we get a call and they need a dog? Are you gonna come in or how's that work? Or am I going too fast?
No, he's actually, there's been a conversation about him going full time.
Okay.
As part of being the handler for the K nine.
Okay.
So that leads us to another conversation regarding his compensation. Right, I'm telling you, I, I've got all of this, I've mapped this out, this conversation is Missy proof, so.
Missy proof.
So.
I'm sorry, I missed.
So, no, 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 and, and it's goodness. I don't, I don't want to detract from it.
No. Cause I'm not.
I had asked Chief to talk with Sergeant Douglas about how he wanted to address that because there's some nuances there of how the police do their salary and stuff.
Right.
That as long as it doesn't hurt the chief's budget for the most part, that is our budgetary constraint.
Right.
That we care about. It's as long as the, he doesn't overextend himself.
Right.
I think we're good with that.
Right.
Monetary wise. But there's, there's some.
We, we needed a, another full time sergeant. That's been in the plans. So at this point.
This be who's on several fronts.
Yeah, we're losing a full or half, part time.
Right.
But we can get part time to come in as well. We can't replace that.
So the, the, the key here, and, and this is where we're gonna get into some his current salary versus, or his current hourly rate.
Yes.
Versus staying hourly or going salary non exempt Sergeant Waymire.
Okay.
Or salary exempt where he could flex his schedule based on, you know, it really depends on what the sergeant is up for. And him and Chief kind of working that out and then Chief letting us know so that we can discuss it in an executive session and figure out the details, okay?
Yes.
But that is one of the topics is what, what does that mean for the police budget? Chief's already looking into that, so.
So also the, the, the car's already got everything it needs. It's equipped for it. How long, what's the age of that car? For the township?
Two thousand and nineteen.
Yes, so we will keep that car for a couple more years? Cause obviously I think, you know, if we get to the point of a twenty two or twenty three cruiser, the adaptability of putting that equipment into a new one.
Well, it's actually that equipment now, we're not even going to a twenty twenty one.
Okay. So they, they've changed it that much, so.
Yes.
So that's something that we I mean. So consider we're, we're gonna need that.
Twenty is when they change, when they change.
So this, this does get into Chief's five to ten year plan.
Sure.
Of, at what rate do we replace vehicles? Do we replace them in bunches? Do we replace them individually over a set number of years? Which we talked about when we initially got these vehicles. There's also a step plan in there for addressing pay issues, to ensure that we can retain officers and stuff like that. So and a lot of that leans into a police levy.
Right.
It's not, we don't have to have the police levy do it, but that's good information for the police levy for us to do that kind of investigation.
So basically all we're doing is you're, we're just sharing this information. We're not making any decisions. We're kind of just on certain things.
The, the, the goal here, and I probably should lay this out first, was if we come to a decision tonight about the K nine.
Right.
Yes.
If we don't, because there's other details like his salary and stuff that has to be worked out, then my goal would be to have that all decided during the next Board of Trustees here in September.
Yeah.
Cause I told Chief today, I said, this is important conversations and I didn't want to rush the conversation.
Right.
And for, and miss something. So because we're working with APA Sharma, because Chief has worked with Sergeant Douglas to work out the details, we're having the, the table setting and table clearing conversation.
Okay.
And hopefully in a week and a half, we have a Board Trustees meeting, we can make a decision and move forward on that.
I like that idea better because I liked it for, you know, Ms. Sharma and Chief Littleton and Sergeant Douglas have everything and then they come back and say, okay, this, this instead of.
One of the things that APA Sharma did mention is that it does say in the police handbook that overtime will be used sparingly. That's a detail Chief has to work out with how that's gonna, but we were talking about flex time or flexing his schedule, but Sergeant Waymire has the same thing, right? Where her investigations
Yes.
lead to her working overtime, but Chief has to manage that and make sure that it doesn't go over in any one area that makes him top heavy or bottom heavy.
Okay.
So one of the things that Chief had also told me was one of the compensations that canine office, canine handlers often have is sometimes they're able to leave thirty minutes early.
Yeah.
And come thirty minutes late. That allows for the care of the dog before and after shift. And that would be something we would consider as part of his compensation is how we wanna balance the salary with other non tangible benefits that we can make sure that he's whole and we're good.
Okay.
So I know Chief has got that one under control for figuring out. The vet visits, I don't have a problem with that, you know, even if it was with the same wording, a minimum of one that.
How much are the vet, how much is a vet visit? I don't know. Is it like, just like a regular visit?
So Kai went to the vet once a year with the exception, like if he got, if he tore a pad off and it needed, you know, to have some type of surgery, which he didn't, but he always tore his pads. What were, I think about three hundred bucks.
I think this last one wasn't even three hundred. I was thinking it was like two thirty or two eighty, something along those.
And that's, and that's not unusual.
No, no.
For a dog vet visit, right?
Right.
A working dog.
Yes, okay.
But that, I think that one covered what, any immunizations he was required, any of that kind of stuff?
So on that vet visit, I would get all of his immunizations that he was required to have. I think the rabies is every three years, so obviously he didn't get that every time.
Right.
But then he got heartworm tested, flea intake, you know, treatment. No, something else in there. We could pull the bills and look.
I was just asking, cause I didn't know if, with that, with that kind of dog, if it's more than like me taking mine. So I didn't know, you know.
No, as long as he keeps up on the the maintenance and the care for the dog, I mean, short of some type of major illness or
Yeah.
a broken bone or something, I really shouldn't be going to the.
But, yeah, okay. Okay.
The gentleman that I use, Downham Levinon, he I guess you could say it's an unofficial contract that he has with every agency in Warren County and the surrounding counties that participate. He treats their working dogs, so he's very familiar with the breed and how to treat them and everything. He also gives us a substantial discount, which is why it's usually about that price because we're it's our dogs, right? It's not owned by the township. So I don't know what that percentage is. I can get with you. If you want to make that drive, if you have somebody else that you want to use, you know, completely up to you, but I would definitely check in to see what type of discount they could offer you.
Now that, that is an important point is that the dog is not belonging to the township. There was a one dollar per year lease that we paid to the chief for the use of Kai in the police department and we would be doing likely the same thing here where we pay that lease one dollar per year for the use.
Yes.
And I just want to be clear, Sergeant Douglas, you would be okay paying for food grooming? And any personal insurance that you would have to cover?
Okay.
All right. So I think that covered just about everything notes wise that I had. Is there any other questions that anyone has for Sergeant Douglas or for Chief regarding this topic?
No, I mean.
Okay.
Is, so the board is okay with the narcotics work and the patrol as far as suspect apprehension, building searches, article searches, tracking?
That's what Kai did.
That is, and I'll tell you that there's a handful of bomb dogs, you know, in the county. Bomb and patrol. I don't know how much the bomb dog get used. You know, I think after I first started, Green Toe Kai had a, an incident, that's been, I think, the only incident out here in this area. I know that they do sweeps for dignitaries and things like that.
Right.
You just don't hear about them.
Right.
Do you ever take them to school? Do they ever call you for school, for the schools?
For the, like narcotics method?
Yeah.
It's a hit and miss.
Okay.
It, it is a hit and miss.
Cause we used to do it at C T C like once every.
There's there's a stigma out there that drugs aren't in this area, so they don't feel the need to do school.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we did it at school.
Yeah, I think, I think the, since I've been out here with the dog, I've probably been to a school once, maybe twice.
Okay.
And it was, they wanted it way before school started.
Yeah, no.
And, and everything, so.
We let everybody get in class and then soon, it's amazing how fast word spreads and I have to go to my car. No, except.
But from, and I'm glad that the board is go on board with that type of dog for out here because there's been situations, you know, I've had people out here run from me on foot. The dog had been tracked people out here in our own township, you know, catch, catch somebody. So it's not just the other municipalities that we're helping out. I mean, he's getting utilized out here as well.
Okay.
Yeah, any other question?
Good, I'm good.
All right, then we will have a decision at the Board Trustees meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time. Uh, the next topic is ARPA expenditures. We will just kind of jump in here. Just closer grill. Inform me before the meeting that based on what we've already set aside for different uses, which trustees will see, I think that's on the list here that she provided. But there's about sixty four thousand dollars remaining from the ARPA funds that we haven't tapped for use.
Okay.
So let's see, was the I know, okay, so Lexipol was on there, but it was short the second year. So that Lexipol came to just under thirteen.
Okay, so Lexipol, you've got the new one.
Right, yeah.
It actually came in with the update. I just got this pricing yesterday. If we go with the annual government, annual local government administration policy manual and daily training bulletins, that is two thousand nine eighty fifteen. Then if they break it down and go more specific into the tier two, one and tier two implementations, it's got the breakdown there. So if we were with the whole one year policy manual subscription and implementation, the total is going to be ten thousand seventy three dollars and ninety five cents.
Okay, so it wasn't the two together?
Right, that's.
An option.
Yeah, well, the first one is year one.
Right.
And then the second one just shows the year two policy manual, just the subscription renewal. So.
So the twenty nine eighty.
There would be twenty nine hundred dollars.
Okay.
And now.
Maintain it.
Okay.
The other one is just kind of the initial setup.
So I have some questions. If they, if, if we want to change some things, like personal time or we can tell them that.
Yes, and actually what they've offered, and I forwarded the email to the trustees, is whichever trustee, I know that you and I have been talking with them a lot, Missy, is they said that they will actually do a Zoom.
Oh, good.
And they can do it, I don't know how, if it can work with our trustee meeting, but if we wanted to, all of the trustees were interested in seeing how it works, they could do a Zoom with all of the trustees.
I, I would ask, well, I would ask them, I mean, if they had it with Missy.
Uh huh.
And they recorded it.
To share it.
Send us a link to the recording, I'd be perfectly fine.
Yeah, because they're like two or three hours behind us, so we won't be able to.
This is Lexipol, just like Chief's Lexipol, he has the ability to change it itself.
Yeah, we should have the ability to.
Well, yeah, that's part of the training. If they walk us through the process for doing that and what it takes to do it.
We would have admin status to it.
Okay.
Show us how to.
And I think this is very, very important.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've already seen what happens when we don't.
Yes, yes, exactly. And charity, thanks for.
So just to be clear, this year is, it's the top one. Next year we do the twenty nine.
Every other year, every year.
Yeah, the second one is just the renewal.
It's already in there. The subscription line is already in there.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and Zach on this is, it, the way Chief Littleton has explained to me, like if there's updates or changes by law, things like this help me. They, they automatically let us know, okay, this is changed per law or O R C, here's a new one, update your book.
Right, right.
It automatically updates them.
Automatically updated. What you have to do is go into the edit mode, scroll down and it'll show you line by line what the changes are.
Okay.
Now sometimes it's just a spacing. You know, and it'll show you, it's just a spacing error. But it'll show you what it is and then what it's changing to. And then you have the option to accept it or reject it.
Right.
And Chief, didn't you say that there's also potential that we could get help with the cost of it?
Yes, so I don't know about the front side of the house, but on the backside, O T R M A has a grant for police and fire. I tried to talk them into letting me qualify for both, but they won't. I only get the police portion. But they give me a thousand dollars back.
Okay.
Okay, so mine's like the same price. It, it actually, it's just going to increase because we added the daily training bulletins to it. And they're managing that part because it takes a lot of time and headache off my plate. But we get a thousand dollars back from O T R M A. I know that they have a grant out there that you can apply for, for townships, it's like up to five thousand dollars. And you just have to explain why you're getting what you're getting and, you know, how it's going to serve and everything else. And then I'm assuming it, they make the determination on what they feel is appropriate from nothing up to five grand.
Can you find out about that and then I, that grant, I can?
Well, they did talk to us a little bit about some of it because that was one of the things with O T R M A. Cause like when Caleb was in the meeting with us, they asked about the training. And that's part of what is in the Lexipol stuff with the daily bulletins and stuff like that. And so O T R M A did mention that there's different opportunities there. When we're actually recording and keeping track of, you know, I completed this training, I completed that training, we went over this, you know, the big one that they were talking about, I think was like the sexual harassment was one of the ones in there because they just want to make sure because
If you're looking at.
there are insurance. So if something happens, somebody comes back, so they're going to give us benefits.
That's it.
Helping sure we have those safeguards in place.
Yep.
And those daily training videos, once your policy is finished, you know, everything's pushed out. Then you can set the number of training videos that you want to do for the month. And if they're managing it for you, it could be done one or two ways. One, they can go through and hand pick like thirty, you know, different policies.
Right.
To train on. It sounds like a lot, but each video is only a minute long and it's a one question test.
Okay.
Right.
But you have, and you can set the date on when you want it to start. I just chose mine to start the first and close out at the end of the month. So the guys have the entire month to go in and in September they have twenty six videos that they're gonna have to watch. So twenty six minutes out of the month, we're watching a policy.
So you, you have all your officers to do, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So, you know, it sounds like a lot, but it's a minute out of the day. If you want to knock them all out in one day.
Right.
Knock your socks off.
Okay.
You got time to do it.
So the, the Lexipol was already kind of earmarked from the second tranche. So that's not part of the remaining sixty four thousand that we have.
It's just up slightly.
The proposed amounts that we have is the forty thousand for the dump truck, fifteen thousand, or sorry, thirty five hundred for the mini split. Let's see, the generator is fifteen thousand, I T is eight thousand eight hundred. And the Lexipol is ten seventy three ninety five.
Those are just the items that were discussed the last.
Right, so those are the ones that we've discussed over the last year, saying that those would go into the second tranche.
But those are my reading is right, those all add up to seventy seven thousand.
Yes.
You did there?
Yeah.
But we still have sixty four thousand left over.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
What is the generator for again, this building?
Both of those.
It's the multi.
Plug in here or over at the maintenance garage if electricity goes out.
Okay.
Cause we have paid to have those plugs installed in both buildings so that we can use it.
Okay.
Just trying to be proactive. This building is not as young as it once was and we've had some natural disasters that prove how important electricity can be, especially for our community to just be able to come in and cool off or warm up or whatever. So if no one has any issues with what's on the second list, I, I would say the I T amount could probably come down about thirty five hundred.
Okay.
Cause I wanted to see how, you know, we have the, the annual re-up for the Office three sixty five with Macologic. We have a couple of other subscriptions now with Adobe and we just ended up replacing the monitors in Karen's office because they were antiquated. And I think right now overall, we're in a good place I T wise. We don't have anything that's high speed, low drag, but we've got good equipment that'll get us a couple of years down the. a couple of years down the road easily. Um, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars uh, or bringing it down thirty-five hundred dollars will give us a little bit more money on the other side and be able to cover replacement of any devices or additional subscriptions that we may need as we're working through uh and identifying how to be more efficient with what we do I T wise. Um, so on the prioritized list, we have one from Chief and one from Mr. Hoops. Um, the one-ton dump truck is already allocated, so we don't need to worry about that one, it's his number one. So, I don't have Chiefs.
We have forty thousand to it. I didn't know if you adding to it, I mean, forty thousand.
Well, we have the fifty.
Oh.
This is the additional forty thousand.
Yeah, okay. That was thinking, we look for useful.
Yeah, we already have the side.
Yeah, so we're, we're ninety thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And something you we should start getting together now.
Yes. Well, and you, and I know we're getting close to when you had mentioned O dot was looking to yeah, swap, swap out some of their vehicles.
Yep.
And we could get one, maybe even more than one
Yep.
of their dumps that would be in good condition.
Definitely last us for years.
Yep. Um, with that rate.
Yep.
So if that's something, now that you know that, you know, you've got the ninety thousand set aside for that, you can pursue those conversations and uh let us know when there's something for the trustees to talk about.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so everything else on.
Jason, what is the second tranche number?
It's on here, it's, it was one seventy-seven.
That's a second.
Fifty-two.
Yes, it's a second tranche.
Yeah.
And this, this is, this is it, we're not getting anymore, right?
No. Correct. The only potential way of getting anymore, and I don't even know if it'll happen, is like if you look on here in March, we got an extra seven hundred and four dollars. That's when they did the reallocation.
Yeah.
And there was additional funds left, so they split that. I believe that is included because it, the one seventy-seven is up from, we were originally only supposed to get the one seventy-six on the second tranche as well as the first tranche.
Yeah.
So that there's already an increase there, so I don't know if they've already done that.
It looks, yeah, it looks like they updated.
Updated it, yeah.
Okay.
So looking at the list, um Chief, what, what is there that uh, I know there's been some talks of different grants, different monies that we're go, going to be going after. Is there anything on your list that can be obtained through that?
Well, with the O Tarna grant up to five thousand, um, I can definitely submit uh, you know, the ballistic shield, some masks. Um, and look for a grant for the A E D. I looked at the D P S website, I think that I originally sent you, then I got back to charity and I got sent back to me. Um, they are coming out with instructions for that uh grant on September ninth. So they're sending out the instructions and the guidelines and everything then.
That's the one that was the like titled Homeland Security stuff.
I don't know why you wouldn't do that when you publish the grant, but you know, I don't. So September ninth is when they're sending out those guidelines, so I'll be able to tell for sure if some of those stuff can fit into that or not.
Right.
Um, but I can get the O Tarma one filled out and see about um the shields and the gas mask.
Right, if, if those, the second one through the fifth one.
The Lexipole, I've already pulled the trigger on because I had it.
Right, so that would have been done, okay. All right. So basically, your, your big need is the, is the mark update.
The radios, yes.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Does anyone have any issue with that? Well, yeah, we're, we're behind the eight ball already.
We should jump on that when we've got the money to do it, I think.
I called Jamie, uh, who's mine, point of contact down at P N R first thing this morning, and she was supposed to have a revised quote for me. Because the one that I quoted here, that it expired October twenty-one.
Okay.
So she was supposed to have it to me. I called a couple of times throughout the day and she's a busy person, so.
When's the deadline on those radios? Before they.
Dead date, I think it's like January first of twenty-five.
Okay.
So it could be one of those things that we could set the thirty-three aside and potentially can make the difference up within the regular police budget.
We could, and I say that because down at the bottom, you know, the new cruiser being upgraded, including lettering and then doing the two-year lease option like I've done on all the other vehicles. The, and I have quotes here, I can make copies, it was printed off at the last minute, I didn't have time to make copies for everyone. But the cost of a new Explorer is about forty-seven thousand dollars, which is a significant increase from what we got in the past years, around thirty-two to thirty-five thousand.
Is that.
Do you know what engines are in this?
The, so the nineteen and twenty, they're the EcoBoost.
The three-five turbo?
Yeah.
So.
And the other three, they're just standard.
That, that we already have?
Yes.
I meant the new ones.
All the new ones?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure it's on.
Is that a statement?
Yes.
Yes. Reason I ask is that, that I've been informed on those three-five, the EcoBoost, um, they're not, uh, they have, and they have issues with overheating. And when they do, uh, there's no course to send back because the cylinder walls are made so thin, they can't be machined. So right now, if something were to happen to our three-five EcoBoost, we're not getting an engine replaced anytime soon. There are none available. So I think it's something to consider. Uh, yes, it's a great engine, it's got tons of power. Something a little more uh, that, that little more proven, because like the other engines that are in there, that are a little easier to replace if something were to happen, I think it's something to at least consider.
Okay.
And that's just from my expertise and, you know, on that, on that subject. I, I love the three-five EcoBoost because they're super fast, but
Right.
you know, um, I, it's just something to consider.
Catch most of these guys who run from.
No doubt.
And.
Yeah, that's, that car's awesome.
Yeah.
But in the event something happens.
Right.
Oh, no, we are running them harder than normal cars most of the time, or, or at times.
Right.
That uh I just hate to see one sit because we can't get parts for it at the moment, because that's, because that's the environment.
Yep, so. And that's the thing here, I mean, you know, I got these quotes uh today and the guy from Buyers Ford told me that the soonest vehicle he could get in is the Tahoe. And that would be here between March and June, and that's not even guaranteed. Everything else is pushed out towards the end of the year.
Yeah, and you won't get all the chips with everything either.
You know, the Explorers are pushed out until after June, uh, the Durangos, the Chargers.
Okay, I, I think it's grabbing a car with a big V eight like with fuel prices, you know, staying as high as they are, I think something else to consider.
Right.
What that fuel cost is going to be with the bigger.
I, I think the uh Explorer that you were looking at was a hybrid, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
I looked at, so that was at least a hybrid. All of the, all the police cars from Ford in the Explorer are a hybrid.
No kidding?
Yeah, for the, that, that started about a year ago, didn't it?
Started in twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Okay.
That's, so.
So that new body.
I like that.
For Tina's take home or Tina's detective car, that by stock Ford is considered a hybrid with that.
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Good.
Now, I watched it.
Ton of fuel.
Yeah, I watched a video um today on the uh Tahos and some of the features they have on there is pretty impressive.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when it comes to safety and fuel reduction and everything else, so I could send a link out if you would like to watch that, because that's way over my head.
Yeah.
About a car.
Yeah. Okay.
But that's just where we're at with, with Cruiser. If you want to look at replacing one next year or going into twenty-four.
Hmm.
I think now is the time, between now and January, to really start start pulling the trigger on that, because we're not going to get it until the end of the year or the following year.
And I, unfortunately, I think that falls outside of what we can do ARPA-wise.
Oh, sure.
At this point, but no, I, I wholeheartedly agree and I think a lot of that needs to be part of our skeleton for how we're going to address the police funds levy possibly for next year.
And I also believe that we're, we're probably two to three years out before we really start seeing that new car production up
Mm-hmm.
to a point where there's going to be enough cars out there, people go, the prices are not going to be as inflated as they are today.
That, between that and uh manufacturers going to a dealerless model, that is also going to push things down to where it's a much more manageable transaction like it was five to six years ago versus what it is today.
You'll order the car instead of going and picking it up a lot.
Yep. So with the Mark Radio, I think that, that would account for half of what we have allocated.
Mm-hmm.
So I think there, the police would be good if, if that was what we did for the police department. Um, over on the roads and cemeteries, I know the Durapatcher is high on our need list. Is that still accurate?
Yeah, you said dump truck, but that, the one-ton dump is on the top of the list there.
Oh, okay, so that wasn't the same dump truck that we were talking about, oh, okay. Okay.
That one's a two thousand and one. And we just dumped nine hundred bucks into it.
Oh, that, that was the one that you had the parts out on the counter?
Yeah.
Wow, was that an axle? I honestly couldn't tell what it was.
It was a fuel line.
Fuel filter.
Fill.
Fill.
We went to put fuel on Friday. Now, mind you, I've known that we've had a, a leak, but a minimal leak.
Right, and it just dropped out.
Uh, yeah. Um, it wa, it was dumping it out down the frame on both sides. And stopped, so.
So what, what would a, a one-ton run us?
I'm not spec'd one out. Uh, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm assuming we're probably fifty to seventy thousand, I would.
Right.
Is that something the state has as well?
Their, their one-ton's are crap when they're done.
Okay.
They were, I don't know if they got into that.
Having a show and tell. So everybody knows if anybody's watching, this is what Mr. Hoops has been working for with.
Zoom in on that?
Yeah. I mean, that's.
This is what you were putting fuel in and if you was running out.
Yeah, the bottom side was on, on an angle that was completely packed full of rust, mud.
So all that rust is on the gas tank as well.
So we have changed the fuel filter.
Yep.
We've been changing and we will continue, we'll change it several times, but it's just.
So when we make comments that Mr. Hoops needs things, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and no, no offense to police department, they're dealing with nineteenths, eighteenths, twenties, ones and oh ones.
Right, well, and, and they're leasing too.
Right.
The reason he's talking about replacing is because we're leasing.
Right.
Yeah, all by your lease.
It was a two-year lease, so you pay, so let's say this cruiser is, you know, fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Up front, you're paying twenty-five thousand.
Right.
And then the second year, you're paying the other twenty-five and then you flat out.
Oh, you own it, okay, so it's not a true lease.
Right.
Right. Okay, so it's ours, it's ours, we own the cars.
Right, okay.
And we could, and, and we do sell them or trade them in?
We, we sell them on.
Okay, so there's no trade-in like you do with a regular car dealership?
But we could, but the ones that I had out here were from the Flintstone eight.
Right, deals, yeah.
It'd just be easier to sell on GovDeals. So that, that use, I mean, the, the one-ton dump truck, it's a, it's another one, but we
Okay.
we rely on that tremendously.
That's used for the cemetery to
That's the only we.
In for graves and everything else.
I've entertained the idea.
Who are, are uh many with? We don't use trailer?
We don't, I'm using that in the dump truck. I got that all switched around, wiring redone.
Okay.
Trailer is now hooked to the dump truck that's actually legal.
Right, okay.
Now.
Okay.
Um, that trailer is a ninety-four.
Right.
Uh, the wiring's not right on it. We had, we paid Steve to rewire the trailer to match the truck.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not right. So you hook to the, to a pickup truck and the brakes are locked up, and I know I mean, it's a positive feed to it, but, but to make it work on the dump truck, it works for the dump truck, so we don't use anything else.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we're at, I mean, every, everything we do we have to work on.
So.
Every day.
So what, what I'll say is this, is that we have approximately thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars left. Not going to buy you a dump truck.
No.
It could cover part of it, but you're already stretched kind of thin between the Bobcat and the other dump.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So if the thirty-one thousand, if, if you wanted to put it aside for a one-ton, we could do that. You have other needs.
Yep.
Um.
We've also put a ton of money into this one-ton to make it feasible for us.
No, and, and I, and I get that. What, what I'm saying is, is that a lot of your needs are lower in cost.
Right.
So it's an either or for the majority of the items, right? So we could put the thirty-one thousand aside for one ton, but you're gonna, we're gonna figure out how to get the rest of the way there.
Or you could take the money in by your Durapatch in your, and put a couple thousand with it in by your mower, because you need a new mower.
The, right, the Durapatcher, I, I can do a tremendous amount of work for in our whole cemetery, plus our roads. That's probably the number one. I just put to use dump truck because that's a.
Well, and, and here, so I guess when it starts snowing.
Yep.
What can plow? Well, we use the one, we did use the one-ton to plow, didn't we?
Just the parking lots.
Parking lots, okay.
And intersections.
Right, and now with a skid loader, I can go to the cemeteries, I can push those all off, I can push this all off.
Right.
I mean, I can put the one-ton off to the side.
Right, okay, i- is, as long as we're good there, because I mean, that would be the one pressing need. It would be coming at us is when the weather turns, it's going to turn quick and making sure that we have coverage for everything we're responsible for is going to be important. So if we want to put a one-ton and just kind of
Yeah.
push it to the side for right now, um know it's a dire need, but the Durapatcher uh, the exterior main doors.
Yep.
That's a huge one. Priority wise, I mean, cost-wise, it's not that much, but um.
But the mower is pretty bad, but that's, I mean, that's your decision. You know better than I do.
We've tried to fix an injector twice and it still has leaked tonight. I mean, it's not a tremendous leak, but it's, it's leaking, it's a ninety-eight, um, but I, I gotta do something with the deck.
And I, this year, ha- have you reached out to anyone for, are, are you looking for like a a specific brand?
Not a specific brand, diesel preferably, because just a lot, a whole lot more dependent.
I didn't know if like, if like uh up there was that Chase and Helping Hands, if they've got any use, I know they, they sell the Husqvarnas and the Bad Boys and whatnot.
Ablies.
Yeah.
It'll be, it would be a front mount, that's why it's so expensive.
Right.
Compared to a commercial sixty-inch mower, that's ten grand.
By front mount.
Front mount, just to get in our cemeteries.
Okay.
You can get up in next to them instead of being the tire right on your, on your end.
Okay, all right.
And I know.
When I got here, I didn't think, I was like, you don't have to have that. And then you mow. Like, oh, okay, I understand completely why you have a front mount.
And I know, Jason, that you talked about putting least levy on. We're going to have to talk about putting a cemetery levy on. It has been.
We have several needs that we cannot meet by what we bring in in a given year.
Yes.
Whether it's the police, whether it's the cemeteries.
Roads.
The road, well, and the roads is another one where, you know, we're, we're looking down the barrel with the uh, OPWC.
Right.
Project, and we basically submitted the exact same one we submitted last year, and that one got nothing.
Yeah, I know.
Because all the big municipalities went in with three or four projects, and because they're high traffic areas and highly populated areas. They get the money just right, right and left. So we need to find a way. We've now, this this could possibly, we've already gone one year without addressing a road, and we actually had two projects, I think, for last year.
Right.
We had Stack.
Yeah.
And we had Providence.
Yeah.
We pulled Stack to make Providence a priority, and it did nothing for us. Um, we're resubmitting Providence this year. We still have Stack, we still have heater, we still have. Uh, a number of roads that Air Hill needs to be widened in areas, drainage there at Air Hill. And Hecathorn.
Yep.
We have a lot of needs.
Yes.
And right now, uh, our needs are.
Overwhelming.
They're overwhelming with the the amount of funding that we have available to do them, so.
And we're, we're very fortunate to have this ARPA funds to be able to.
Yes.
Upgrade a lot of our stuff that that is just falling apart.
Yes, yes. Well, and 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 I will say from the roads and cemeteries, we've been playing catch up for a little bit. Trying to get everything that we need to maintain that department. I think honestly, if we split the thirty one thousand and put fifteen on the Dura Patcher. Cause that's gonna pay for itself.
Oh, yeah.
In the first four months that we have it.
Can we also, uh, just consider? Some material costs to go along with that.
Yeah.
It's not just the purchase of the machine, but we're also gonna have to purchase the the emulsion that that uses that. So.
And we had, we had talked about that previously, and that may, that may not necessarily need to come out of the ARPA.
Okay.
Um, because we have the permissive tax.
Okay.
Was the uh, the gas tax.
Okay.
So.
We're not gonna fly through.
No.
Four tanks in in two weeks.
Right, right.
I mean, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
We we're gonna have, we have to find stone yet. We have to get the one ton set up to get stone into the, into the box. But that's gonna be, you know, and I don't have a little bit of a cost there.
So do you, there's expenses I gotta, I have to jump through.
Right.
Work out before we just start out there.
And you said there may be a chance that you could maybe possibly get it cheaper. You didn't know.
Right, well, we've not talked, we, that's their asking price. I haven't been down to look at it. I've looked at pictures. I looked at video today.
Have the conversation first with us. To know what what we could pay before he goes.
Oh, no, no. No, yes.
So, and they're, they're gonna put some things on there that are current models.
Right.
Uh, they're gonna put a tip heater on there. They're gonna put a ratcheting strap on to, you don't have to get up there and jack it up and get it off of.
Right.
Make it a little quicker.
Right.
But. It's, it, this, this will help our township tremendously. I have contacted. Paulin Township, they finally got an answer to me that they are not willing to negotiate help.
Right.
Period, none of that, which is fine.
Yeah.
Um, I've called ODOT, District Seven manager, the main manager there, District Eight. Um, if if they had one in our county, Montgomery County, they would be willing to help us out. Not on a, every year, we could get it two or three times a year. We can do it out of emergency situation that Montgomery County doesn't have a Dura Patcher. Clark County has one.
Right.
So I cannot get one from there. If they get one in Montgomery County, I can, I could use it, but right now we're, I have nothing there. I cannot have. The townships don't have it.
So if if we basically say the Dura Patcher's in.
Yep.
That leaves approximately sixteen eight left over. What on your list? I know you've prioritized it, but is there anything on here that is?
Uh, finish our, we have to get electric.
Right.
To our mini split, the mini splits in.
Right.
I'm waiting on electric for that.
Right, so we have that. We also have the exterior doors and.
Exterior doors plus, I mean, the zero turn mower would be my next thing that.
And there might be a thing that we could, I know Clay Township, do do they not lease those and then they come in?
Buy it. We could buy a used one with two hundred hours on it, which would bring our price down su- substantially.
Yes. Oh, two hundred hours isn't so bad.
No, no.
I think that's definitely.
I mean, I personally have one that has fourteen hundred hours on it. I've had it ten years, so.
Thirteen hundred.
Just, uh, I mean, they're, they're very dependable.
Okay.
We need something that's strong enough, like some climbing hill heater.
Yeah.
Um, we try not to do all that whole thing. You can't do it. It has to be bone dry out and really hot.
Yeah.
Climbing the hill, so. I mean, that that being said, we can change that to the skid loader. I mean, I can get a flame mower and I can climb that hill with no problem, so there's things that'll change, but. That mower would be next.
So.
No, go ahead.
So the, the, the Dura Patch, the, the splitter and the. The doors.
Electric.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha. Yeah.
I mean, does that sound good?
Yeah, I I mean, would you say something else to look into?
Mini splitter.
Well, that's already up in the top. You're probably talking about the electric.
Yeah.
Finish electric.
And then.
Is that on here?
The Dura Patch and then the doors.
Doors.
So, yeah, if we could bring the cost of the mower down just five thousand dollars, that would allow for the electric and the uh. Exterior doors to be done as well. So if if the mower, let's say the mower was fifteen hundred. Is that right?
If the mower was fifteen hundred?
Fifteen thousand.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that's, that's a ton for a new mower.
Yeah, I overshot. I mean, we get, we were getting bids at seventeen six back in the spring, so.
Right.
We just put twenty for.
I priced a tractor today and they said that this year's model's next year's going up ten to eleven percent cost, so.
So i- if we were to do the electric and the exterior doors, we'd have to get the mower down to ten thousand. So if if that's doable, great. If it's not, then we could just do the mower.
But I, I mean, I can hold that over till next year. And then I can put.
We are almost out of my budget into that.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's a good idea too. So if if we kick the mower over to next year. Then that leaves you with sixteen thousand. So you have the electric, the exterior doors. The skid loader angle broom.
Left for roads.
Poly plates for the cemetery.
Man, I know it does. I'll hint. It's, what we use now is plywood.
Right.
That when it rains, they're, they they just, they.
They sag, yeah.
Yeah, they sag, and then we're driving over them every time we go across for a grave. All winter long, all spring long, all fall when it's wet. The poly plates are just high density plastic that we would, we would have for as long as nobody stole them. You know, we leave them out overnight. We cover the grave for the next day. Uh, I think we could get six poly plates and do away with thirty boards that we had better junk.
So am I figuring this up, Jason? If we do all that?
Fourteen twenty, four fourteen thousand two hundred. Approximately.
That's what you got figured out?
That's what carry over into the mower for next year?
No, fourteen thousand two hundred would be the skid loader broom, the poly plate. The exterior doors and finishing the electric with the Dura Patcher.
Got you. So I wanna add something here, just additional conversation, since we brought up the cemeteries. And ARPA funds.
Fourteen thousand two hundred.
Yeah, I went to Clay Township's uh, meeting, uh, who met with the Dayton Foundation. To set up an endowment fund through the Dayton Foundation for cemetery endowments, uh, historical endowments. Or a historical preservation. Um, this is something that, you know, Clay had considered even, and I don't know that they did. Using ARPA funds to go into, uh, once you hit the twenty five thousand dollar mark, uh, they can start investing that money for you. For perpetual care of cemeteries. Uh, until you get to that twenty five thousand mark, you can set, we can set up a no cost checking account. Uh, that we could draw from for those purposes if we needed them. But this would be something that we would set up in the event, uh, you know, someone passed away, they wanted to to leave something to the township, or they wanted to make a donation to the township. Uh, it's something that, because it's held with and made to the Dayton Foundation, we would not hold it on our books. And it would not look like, it would not be our money in our accounts. So it's just conversation that, you know, going forward with perpetual care of the cemeteries, uh, in the creating an endowment.
Right.
This is money that could potentially jumpstart that process, uh, if we had some money left over that we weren't going to put somewhere.
We'd have to check on that though, because we have a deadline that the funds have to be spent, and I don't know that they would classify that as spending the funds.
Clay was looking into it.
Right.
They just, I think they had already done the groundwork to say that, yes, it was part of ARPA, they could do it.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on that.
You can check with, check with their fiscal officer.
Okay.
And find out.
Or or I can do and check with the attorneys.
Yeah.
Cause they would be the one basically be able to tell us yes or no.
And there's, there's a lot more information that goes along with that. I met with the lady from Dayton Foundation, uh, after their meeting. Got her information just to, uh, I was gonna bring this up at our trustee meeting, but since we were talking about it. If it's something that we wanted to have her come talk to us, she was happy to come do that. So.
So does that leave a seventeen thousand then? I figure that out, right?
No, so we have fifteen thousand for the Dura Patcher.
Right.
And fourteen two for the electric, the exterior doors, the poly plates and the skid loader angle broom. Would, would that be sufficient, Mr. Hoops?
Yeah.
For the, the stuff that you need, trying to get the ma- max value out of what you're doing.
Yep.
Push the mower to next year, then uh, that allows for us to do that, and that still gives us a uh. Slight cushion.
Are we, uh, you look, you looked over that, like paint on our building? Is that something we're even interested in doing?
I would like to, but.
I think we need it. I mean, that the, it protects the building as well as making it not look like an eyesore.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, the people on that road have dealt with that for years and years and years, plus our salt building.
Do you know what it would cost to, to paint the building?
Is that your estimate to do it?
Yeah, that would be awesome doing it. I'm, I'm figuring. Awesome doing that work. That's not paying somebody to do it. We couldn't.
That's just materials.
That's material and having a lift to do that.
Hmm.
That's, you know, that's a.
I'm lifting the bucket of the Bobcat. Just kidding.
And, oh, just not really cool with that.
Wouldn't have like a bucket truck. If we could some, find someone who had a bucket truck, could we use a bucket truck? Would that be ocean?
Yeah, I mean, a bucket truck, but the thing with a bucket truck is who, who just wants to rent out a bucket truck that you're gonna spray paint on?
Yeah.
Oh, he has one.
I got a friend that's got one. I thought maybe he would let it.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's a, just something to think about.
So.
Back in our buildings.
So which would get, which do you think is more important, the painting for the outside of the building or the skid loader angle broom?
I can rent the boom, the broom.
Okay.
Okay, what about them? The, the, when you and I talked, that grease gun and all that stuff.
Yeah, well, I put on there, if we were gonna put money, we can, you know, allot money for tools, a milw- a mig welder.
Yeah.
An impact gun, a five ton jack, chop lights, battery grease gun. I mean, you're, you're putting thirty grease zirks on a mini. You're gonna have twelve, maybe fifteen on it, on skid loader. If you're using them every day, you're doing that every day. Let alone your brush shed.
With some ball, ball bigger for that.
Five hundred bucks probably.
Five hundred dollars?
For the grease gun?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So.
DeWalt stuff now, we could probably get a DeWalt grease gun. I mean, I'm, it's, we have one now. Uh, we, the handle to open up the grease gun is broke, bent, it's welded once before, so you have to work around that. Batteries work for thirty seconds, you gotta change the other one out and use that one.
So that's about five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that number fifteen on here. And that brings it up to an even fourteen thousand.
What did we just?
So for the electricity, doing the electricity for the, the office and basement.
Yep.
Paint outside the shop, exterior man doors, poly plates for the cemetery. And the grease gun.
Okay.
So that came to fourteen thousand, which would.
And the Dura Max.
And the Dura Vtr.
Yes, that I already took that one off initially, so.
Wait till we rewatch this and see how many different names you call that.
What is it? A Dura Patcher?
Dura Patcher. That's all, that's all it is.
So that would leave us with approximately two thousand eight hundred seventy six dollars and ninety eight cents.
Is that factoring back into thirty five hundred?
It does not. It does not. I'm only using the numbers on the paper.
Right.
Yeah.
Some breathing room.
Exactly. That's sixty three hundred seventy six dollars is what we would have with the thirty five hundred out of the IT. I think that's, I think that's good use of the funds.
Yes.
We're, we're doing stuff that we need to get done, getting a leg up on stuff that we've needed direly of some time. So if everyone agrees to those, then we can start working on the resolution.
What I'll have to have is I will have to have quotes.
Right.
I have to submit the quotes to the attorney's office, then they will prepare the resolutions off of the quotes.
After that, is there any additional calls for that?
You have to get.
For all the things that we're buying.
Books or your doors.
Anything under fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to have a quote.
This is for the ARPA funds.
Okay.
We have to dock, we, there's additional documentation requirements for the use of these funds.
So, I mean, if, if we're gonna, I guess you would just have to go get a, a itemized list for, for example, painting the building. I guess that would be sufficient. Um, is there? We've allocated.
Throughout the day?
Uh, two thousand for the legal counsel?
Yes.
That is to, to, to help with this appropriation.
Yes.
Is that a one time fee or is that?
That.
Will they charge us more?
No, they just send us invoices that gives us an allotment to pay out of.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that we're gonna exceed that.
Okay.
Or you, the, past that, we may not even use all of that.
That's just the retainer they wanted to.
Okay, alright.
For writing up all of this and helping us with it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't gonna be additional calls we weren't factoring into.
No. They said, okay.
On the Dura Patcher, how are you gonna get quote on that?
Get two quotes for a new one.
Eighty five thousand?
Right. Well, no.
I, 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 I'm being sincere. I mean, if, if you're, if you're looking to buy something used, all you can do.
Is get two additional quotes for new ones from different providers and then package those together and.
Sure, that way they see it. Just wanted to be clear.
Yep. Get a free, right? Alright, for this?
So.
Okay.
So to be clear, number four, number six. Number seven.
Yep.
Number eleven, and then number fifteen is the grease gun. Alright.
If there's that money left over, could we not go ahead and get a ballistic shield?
No.
Yeah. No, and that, that, that is, that is a good question, because we, you know, we are looking at at least right around sixty three hundred dollars. Uh, we could do the ballistic shields.
Okay.
On there as well.
The other stuff I'll, I'll put in for the grant, and then if there's other things that I come across that I could throw into that grant as well, I mean, I will.
Right.
If I can go ahead and secure, because we found ourselves in more than one predicament where. We needed a ballistic shield, but then we're waiting for somebody else to bring one out if they have one, so.
And you'll use them downtown last.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, last time, okay.
Across street from my house too, by the way.
Right.
And I'm going back through some history there, but.
That house you needed four or five.
Yeah.
Yes, you did.
Now, you said we need three quotes.
Okay. For your.
Go with legal.
So for yours, because of the amounts, I would only need to have the quotes for the.
Mark radios.
Radios.
Okay.
That thing. That's all I would need for. I mean, I would have to kind of have, I would have to have quotes, but I don't have to have three for the smaller items.
So a certain amount?
Yes.
Well, I don't.
So Caleb doesn't need one for the grease.
That would require to have three would just be the Dura Patcher.
That's thirty three thousand. That's not a little amount. And Marx is the only place we're gonna be able to get those radios, so how does he get three quotes, right? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, cause P and R is the only carrier in the area.
Wanna know that.
Okay.
Little secret, cause I've done government contracts.
Yeah.
They have other resellers.
Okay.[1569.41]
And so you get a quote from your resellers, no, exactly, well, it doesn't matter if it's higher or not, because you don't actually have to go with.
Okay.
The lowest, I mean, it behooves you to do so.
There you go.